Order, would everyone please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Councilman B. Barkers.
Here.
Councilwoman Jersey.
Here.
Okay, we'll have a quorum, we'll move on. Approval of the agenda. Are any questions concerned or additions to this agenda? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as read.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes from the January 7th meeting. Are there any questions or changes or additions to that? Do you have a motion to approve January 7th agenda or minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the January 7th minutes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the financial report. We had deposits in the amount of six hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Accounts payable in the amount of one twenty-seven, three ninety point twenty-three. Transmittals in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Payroll in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents. Questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the bills as read?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have any correspondence tonight? Items from the public, now is your chance to get on the agenda. You're on. Okay, we'll move on to council comments. And like I did last year, I just want to kind of run through what we accomplished as a council. We had a pretty good year last year. We completed approximately ten thousand, four hundred feet of mill and asphalt overlay. Completed twenty-one hundred feet of chip seal throughout the community. Repaired a portion of the community center parking lot. We repaired mill and overlay two hundred feet section on Rainbow Avenue. Reconstructed eight hundred feet of Sierra Avenue. Completed EPA required lead and copper inventory. That was kind of a pain. Replaced a broken cluster of valves on Main Street. We don't have that one totally patched. That'll be on the list to finish this year. Rebuilt the corner of Chatterton Avenue leading to the county road. Used our roto mill for that. Repaired the curb and gutter along CJ Avenue, which is up by the grocery store. Worked with both stocks and to ensure the completion and road improvements and octagon subdivision. Removed and rebuilt Eighth Street between Bridge and Main Avenue. Completed a significant amount of pothole patching throughout the community. Prepared the road approach into the family's hour. We also fixed a broken water line in there while we removed it. It was feeding nothing. We played, laid fifteen hundred foot of water line replacement in South River Street to the south side of Hugus Ditch and the public pool. Received a one point three million dollar grant for funding the help and the cost of the water line project. Removed broken, and we removed the waiting pool at the hot pool or at the kids' swimming pool. Mainly because it was too expensive to repair. And so we just did, we removed it, did an overlay with concrete. And replaced the valley pan at the post office. Completed a lift station on Myrtle Street and put into service. Hauled several thousand yards of material into Never Forget Park. Completed dirt work for the parking lot, including the dirt work prep for the curb and gutter and approach. For the thousand feet of curb and gutter, paved the approach, installed a valley pan into Never Forget Park and Veterans Island. Installed the water line and sewer line to the new restroom. Applied for a grant, received a grant for phase number two. We cleaned up the property that we use over at where we park all our vehicles and everything. And actually, we're going to have to open, well, we won't pay to open the street, but we will move the fence, our fence onto our property line and open up the street. It'd be part of Hickory Street. And we sold mowers and vehicles in the total amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. I thought was quite well. We completed and adopted the Saratoga Transportation Alternative Master Plan, which with the assist, assistance of YDOT, in a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We rewrote Title Seventeen in its entirety. And that should be coming before the councils soon. Title Seventeen deals with our building codes and subdivisions. Developed and updated the map on GIS system. Constructed an ordinance allowing chickens in the community and adopted it. Completed federal required mapping grant associated with the National Flood Insurance Program. They replaced the heat exchangers at the public swimming pool. Completed engineering and design for sewer lift station that will be installed at the airport. Issued seventy-nine building permits, which thirteen of them were for new dwelling. We purchased the new road broom. Crushed eight thousand tons of recycled asphalt for use on projects throughout the community. And that's really cut back on our gravel means and holding up well. We turned in an application and completed the environmental grant funding and load for the replacement of two sewer line crossings under the North Flat River. Expecting one point five million dollar grant for the project. We were able to complete several aspects of these accomplishments entirely in-house. That includes administrative work such as ordinance writing, grant administration, and well construction during the town was able. During this time, the town was able to save several thousand dollars in the process. Continued to grow and develop as an organization, being better team and continue to improve in public service. Had a successful mosquito program with ground fogging and three aerial applications. Purchased two new vehicles. Established the K-9 program. Had our first time shop with the cop for the fire department. We purchased a ladder truck from Rock Springs and received a pumper from the town of Rawlins. Had a new rec director and established and filled a new rec director assistant positions. This is, this is the one that I like, I gotta say, is the best. We completed three financial audits. The town has caught, caught up and all audits have come back with determination that all items represented fairly in all material aspects. This is also referred to as unqualified opinion. This means bookkeeping is being performed at or above the GAAP standard for the state. That, that one pleased me more than about anything where you've got done. These are the larger complications. This doesn't mean day-to-day operations are being consistently carried out. Our ongoing project began to design pedestrian improvements for a walkway down from the high school down to Elm Street and the community center. Pedestrian improvements from Bridge Street Avenue toward Saratoga Inn while applying the TAP grant. While applying for the TAP grant to the state of, state for the project. Planning and developing a project for the replacement of sewer lines crossing underneath the Flat River Project, which is slated for 2026. Started design on the West Bend sewer replacement project, replacing sewer main lines in several alleys on the west side of town. Project is slated to start this spring. Beginning phase two of the Sar, Never Forget Park, which will include a restroom, sod sprinkler system, landscaping, and moving forward. Opening up the right of way between Hickory and River Street to the Flat River. That was the right of way I talked about in our parking area. Replacing rough street areas around the community, including the replacement or removal of several valley pans throughout the community. Developing a pothole project and seeking grant funding to meet additional requirements for new lead and copper rule EPA. Beginning and completing construction on the airport lift station. Planning for improvements at the swimming pool, hot pool area. Continuing to review and update ordinances. Continuing to seek and acquire funding for infrastructure projects. I want to, that's just part of what we as a council have accomplished. We couldn't have done it without the people that worked for us. We have developed quite a team and I want to thank each and every one of them because we couldn't have got a lot of this done without them. Well, they'd probably still be working on audits and asking for more money. So, but I think, I think the past council and the present council have great ideas and we're going to continue to move forward and do improvements for the town of Saratoga. Okay, any questions? Okay, we'll move on to reports from departments, town hall.
We have ordinance number eight seven eight. It's the franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy for the second reading. We have Black Hills Energy here and on video.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions for them or if they would like to add anything.
Would, do you like to add anything before we move on to the second reading or hold your thoughts until after?
We don't have anything to add. On, on camera, we have, we introduced ourselves the last time. We have Lori Barkis, our senior manager of local affairs. My name is Willinda Barrett, manager of gas operations.
First of all, gas operations supervisor.
Well, thank you for being here and we'll move forward then.
Ordinance number eight seventy-eight. An ordinance granting Black Hills Wyoming Gas LLC doing business with Black Hills Energy. Its assessors and assigns the right, permission, and authority to construct, maintain, and operate a gas transmission and distribution system, including main pipes, conduits, services, and other structures in, under, upon, over, across, and along the streets, alleys, bridges, and public places within the present and future corporate limits of the town of Saratoga, Wyoming. For the furnishing, transmission, distribution, and cell of gas, whether artificial, natural, mixed, or otherwise, for lighting, heating, domestic, industrial, and other uses in said city. Limiting the term of said grant, describing the terms and conditions under which said company may operate, and repealing ordinance number seven three three.
Questions? Concerned? Do I have a motion to pass? Ordinance number eight seventy-eight, Black Hills Energy franchise agreement on its second read.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance eight seven eight.
On the second reading?
Oh, on the second reading.
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, more, ordinance number eight seventy-eight, Black Hills Energy franchise agreement passed on the seventh reason. That was all we have unless you guys have something else to add. Well, thank you for being here. Okay, that all we have under town hall tonight?
That's it.
Okay, we'll move on to the police department.
Mr. Mayor, council. The past two weeks, police department had a hundred and fifty-two law calls. We had a canine deployment, negative for any findings. There's been six animal calls, three alarm calls. We've had fourteen traffic citations and warnings and then a warrant arrest.
Good.
Any questions? Ice fishing went uneventful for us and so all that went well.
Good, yeah, good. Quick question. Have you done any additional follow-up on what the sheriff and your grade on your?
Yeah, actually just for the, it's not Reed.
Ward.
Ward, that's it. I had Reed stuck in it.
I said that.
He actually just texted me, he's spoken with the sheriff of Converse County. He's waiting to hear from the chief. He's getting some dates tentatively tomorrow and he'll let me know. I sent the sheriff an email today, I haven't heard anything back from him on furthering our discussion with just a possible two-party dispatch center and for pricing on contract.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
We'll move on to the fire department. They have, they have no updates to give us.
We brought it over the updates. Number ten. Eight thirty-four.
Yeah? None? Eight thirty-four. Oh, eight thirty-four. I was throwing off what he told me. My bad. My twenty-four does not have that. Thirty-four. Is beyond loop. Saratoga Volunteer Fire Department, update for town council. January twenty-first. Auburn County Fire District discussing who should do payroll as a county fire. This is, this was, we, Corinne and I attended their meeting on this because the way I remember it being explained is they were going to do when our volunteers go out on a county fire call since we're, they were going to pay our volunteers. Okay? Well, since then, stuff come up that it wasn't actually in the contract. And since they formed a new district, fire district, they are not obligated to do payroll. They are no longer associated with the county who used to send the reimbursement checks. So what we're in the process of trying to find a way to make this work. Corinne and Jen had done some research. And it wasn't good, what we heard from workman's comp, but supposedly there's some people involved that have some good ideas and how to make it work under Fair Labor Standards Act, where we don't have to employ them as full-time people. So it's in the attorney's hands right now. Both attorneys are talking to each other. Both of them are reviewing the Fair Labor Standards Act. And hopefully with, before the next meeting, I'll have a report back so we know which way to go. But there's, there's definitely some concerns about us doing it. For one thing, we, I'm not going to put the burden on our peoples. So we'll go from there. There's some questions, we're not the only municipality has concerns on this, so. And everybody was under the same interpretation that we were, that they were going to take care of payroll because they'll be actually working on a county, not in town. So anyway, that's where we're at on that. They had one firefighter go to their midwinter fire school in Riverton. Had elections last meeting, Chief Pat Walliser, Assistant Chief Tom Westring, Captain Nick Carey, Lieutenant Sir Creed James, and Marcos. There goes. Okay.
There it goes.
I don't, I don't want to say it because it'll probably be wrong. They'll have their annual fire banquet on February twenty-second. Had one member leave the department. So that probably puts them at thirty-one, I believe. They were matched out, thirty-two. I will open it up for questions that I probably can't answer if there are. Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the recreation department.
Howdy, Carter. Basically just wanted to have you guys adopt these rates. It's going to be for swimming lessons that we're going to offer this year. I know it's been quite some time since lessons were offered. I took a look at Rawlins, ours are significantly lower than theirs. It's really the only aquatics center and other aquatics center in Auburn County that I have to look at. If you have any questions, absolutely answer them.
What were Rawlins's?
Their private lessons, three times a week is fifty dollars. Ours would be thirty-five, theirs, two times a week is thirty-five dollars. And then they're not, they're like group rates or whatever you can call it, a little different than ours. It was kind of more confusing, so I just said our group rate, yeah, because our max is going to be six kids per group.
Cool. Any additional questions? I have no problem with the rates. Do I have a motion to go ahead and set these rates? Lessons at the swimming pool for the upcoming season. It'd be two to three times per week, twenty dollars. This is for a group setting and then the private lessons are three times per week, twenty-five dollars, or thirty-five dollars, two times per week is twenty-five dollars. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass these.
Rates for swimming.
Yeah, rates for.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, thank you.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Yeah, I've been watching your Facebook page and you guys are doing a good job keeping everything updated on that and everything. Lot of good advertisement there. Appreciate it, Carter. Okay, we'll move on to Department of Public Works. Emery's not here tonight, he is actually in training for mosquito application. So he'll be another certified individual. Right now, we only have one that can actually handle the chemicals. So he's have, he's have to be there every time. Emery's in that training. He passed along that everything was going fine in the Department of Public Works, Planning Commission, and the Joint Powers Board. So we will not have a report for, from him tonight. The Planning Commission's next meeting is February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, at five thirty PM here at the town hall. Water and Sewer Joint Power Board is February twelfth, six PM at the Flat Valley Community Center. And we have nothing to report from the community center joint power boards. I've been laid up, so I haven't had a chance to go to their meeting and see how they want to handle that and sending over stuff. So, recreation commission.
That's the new report. We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. The next meeting is February third, here at the town hall at six o'clock.
Saratoga Advisory Board, I'm going to have Brenda do that report since she's the.
Secretary?
And the clerk. And why call secretary? Clerk for the airport, Mark.
They said snow was going good at that time, didn't have much at that time. They'll see what else, well, you know. Iran volunteered to work on the minimum standards and they're starting that from scratch again and. They have one person that's interested in doing the landscaping and they're putting that out to bid for the landscaping up there. The master plan requirements were discussed and runway length was discussed at, oh, wait, that length. And the need for a runway extension is discussed. The data, the engineers have the runway, was discussed that that possibly is a racket. They said, well, that's just preliminary, so there's a lot more discussion about that. The airport will be receiving an ADS receiver, track the data at the airport and bring in more data from there. And there was discussion of who's wanting to have. All right.
Yeah.
Anything? Having just a couple things to add.
Sure, sure.
So with the landscaping, I've been in contact with Emery, he's going to help us. I need to help just, that's the name of the area that will be landscaped. And he thinks that maybe we don't have to put it out to bid, that some of it can be done in-house because it's more like a zero scape kind of thing. And we might be able to save some money in that respect.
Great.
So he's going to work with me on either building a bid packet or seeing what we can do in-house to save money for the landscaping. We're also going to have to go out, the original bid, they wanted to put in a twenty-five foot flag. But I'm sure there's going to be FAA restrictions on that. So we're going to have to look and see what is actually allowed for the area. And also, originally, and this is the calendar year, not the fiscal year for the government. It was about a hundred and seventy-seven by fifty for landing piece. And if I'm correct, for the calendar year, they brought in two oh five.
Nice.
Oh, wow.
Good.
So they'll be able to afford their landscaping either way, but we're trying to go for the cheaper option. So we'll see what else we can do for that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Well, thanks for doing that, DeRon, and yeah, if we can do stuff in-house, you know, guys are going to be working up some there this spring anyway, putting the.
Yeah.
The lift station in.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything we can do to save money, well.
Yeah.
It's your guys' money, but.
Yeah, so Emery's willing to work with us and he, it was his idea actually, so.
Great.
But, and, and just one, as an aside, I did go to the planning commission board. If you guys don't know what they did by putting together that Title Seventeen subdivision, I've never seen a committee put that together like they did. I mean, it got down to the last comma that they were arguing about. So.
Let me get, was that Miss Nancy?
Very impressive what they did. And they said that they're going to be attacking eighteen now, which is. Very impressive what they did, and they said that they're going to be attacking eighteen now, which is a whole nother beast, so.
I was involved with that Title Seventeen right up until, to the last, when they finally put the finishing touches on it, and that was, they took, they did a lot of work on that.
A lot of work.
The planning commission did it, and I, personally, I feel they did a good job, it's gonna make, you know, there were some concerns that was gonna make Bell be more harder and snatched. You know, like if you want to put in a subdivision now, it's all in one spot, one packet that you have to meet to get a subdivision going, instead of, before it was eight, you had to read here, move over to another part of the ordinance. And it was very difficult, and that, that come out when you guys started this stock subdivision, that was difficult.
But yeah, but this final project, product, they did an amazing job, and I think you need to give them some kudos for that, for sure. But I don't think, anything else for the airport, that you guys have any questions on?
No, but thank you for what you're doing. Any questions?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the South Central Wyoming Emergency Medical Service. They were possibly gonna be here tonight, evidently something come up, could be the cold weather, I don't know. But anyway, their next meeting is February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, six PM at the Riverside Town Hall. Second quarter report. Is there any new business to be brought before the town? I don't see any need for an executive session, any further business to be brought before the town. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'd make motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?